Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape County Herald on January 4th, 2017. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start with A&amp;F. We'll be getting the museum report at the next work session. We'll do that in two weeks. So, Mrs. Lane, A&amp;F.
We have nothing to report at this point, other than we will be meeting to review the budgets on Friday, so I would like to turn it right over to Jill.
Okay, we'll start with the tax collector. She will give her update, and then also, I believe she has a capital request. She can explain her capital.
Hello, everyone. So, as you know, we're at the end of the year, and this time of the year, we prepare our reports, and one of those reports is year-end penalties. Anyone who has balances over $10,000 at the year-end will be imposed a 6% year-end penalty. And I just mailed out eight letters this year, as opposed to four last year and one the year before. Our direct debit for utilities was very successful. We have 310, and that's about 12%, which is really good. Irrigation violations, we had, we mailed 17, we mailed 41 warnings out this year, as opposed to 58 in '16 and 48 in '15. We had six summonses in 2015. We had no summonses in '16, and this year, we had, we fined three times. There was one resident with three offenses, so if that happens again, it'll go to a summons. But we've only had one violation this year, so that's pretty good.
Is that what we do, three warnings and then summons?
Three warnings, three warnings, three fines, and a tiered level, and then it goes to courts. So, we have a HP laser printer downstairs that's on its last leg. It's about 10 years old, and it will eventually need to be replaced. And I'm hoping that we can replace that with a color printer, so we can do more of our forms in-house than ordering them and such. And that will come in anywhere from about, I don't know, $4,000 to $6,000. But we should get another decade out of it. That's all I have for capital.
Debbie, I want to just go back to the irrigation fines. What was that particularly for? Was it for overwatering, watering on the wrong day?
All of that.
All of that.
Anything that you're not allowed to do, that you did do, that you shouldn't have done, we warned you. And after three warnings, then it's a summons, which is different. That's new as of this year, where before, we were just summonzing, and then we, actually last year, we changed that, and we had none last year. And this year, we had three that were not, that were more than just a warning, but it was all the same person, so really, to me, that's just one violation.
Are they year-round resident or not?
I didn't bring any of those notes up here. I just wanted to report the facts.
I mean, they, they received the first notice ample time?
Yes.
And they didn't respond?
No. Anybody else?
So, the printer is $6,000 that's being split between the two budgets?
Yes, and it's not necessarily $6,000. It's whatever we can find.
Roughly, right.
There's a range. It's $4,000 to $6,000. Hopefully, we'll come in lower to the $4,000. But it, again, it depends on, on our needs, too. We require a three-tray machine down there, so that we can, both departments can utilize it at the same time. One department uses a three-hole punch, one, one doesn't. We both use it for letters, envelopes, I mean, so it's, yes, it'll be split between tax and utilities.
Split between the two, okay. Anybody else have questions for Debbie?
Okay. Okay, thanks. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, tax assessor.
She has no capital request this year.
That's about the only good thing I have to say. Happy December, everybody. I'm, I have to report that Vital Communications has requested an extension from the Board of Taxation to complete the revaluation. After a project update meeting with Vital, the county, Jill and myself, the decision was made to ask for more time to review the sales data, to ensure complete and accurate study of the market statistics, which are ever-changing. This would have the numbers come in at January 10th. The letters go out January 22nd, after I review it, and then informal reviews for approximately two weeks after that. And then the book would be printed February 10th, which is a month later than it would normally be printed. Between June and today, there were 32 usable sales. Between December 31st and today, there were 96 usable sales. So, we're seeing an increase in sales, and really, kind of focusing more on, or putting, putting more weight on the newer sales, rather than the sales from 2016, where we were still seeing some flat and some small growth. So, I think just taking the extra time, taking the extra look, will ensure that we have a good job, a good product, and hopefully, everybody will be happy. Does this cost more? No.
I have to agree with, I think, having an extension so that it's complete, because I think you're dead on there. The sales that have taken place, even within the last six months, there's a remarkable difference.
Than in the beginning of the year, is what you're saying? Yeah, and even compared to 2016, too, yeah.
You're seeing some numbers in the middle of the island that are, just have outpaced what anyone would have expected. 200 block sales for new construction that are high twos, high, high two million.
For new construction, yeah.
Really unusual.
Well, it resulted in more appeals, less appeals?
Well, that's what the informal review process is for, so that if there are a lot of people that call and bring, you know, their complaints or their opinion, and we, you know, weigh that, there may be some tweaks that we have to make that would lessen the amount of appeals that we would have to hear. And Vital does have to defend it for two years.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I have to go, Mark has to go, but it's, they're defending their numbers that I approve. Interesting.
Is, is there, is there a mechanism in this, in this huge formula that I guess they have that would, would throw out the extremely high sales and also the extremely low sales, when you figure out the average that you're going to apply?
Yeah, we use, you know, mean, median. There's a coefficient of deviation we use. Sales ratio studies, which show the, the sale price compared to the assessment, which helps us gauge where, you know, where the borough is going value-wise.
So, those abnormalities are accounted for?
Yeah.
When you're figuring out what your final assessment is on the average?
Like, let's say the $10 million sale at 110th Street, that was private, nonusable. We only had two sales on the beachfront, so, I mean...
What do you mean by it's nonusable?
It won't go into the sales ratio, because, because it was so high, and it was private, and, you know, it wasn't listed on the open market, so, I mean, well...
By all accounts, it's an arms-length transaction. I don't know why that wouldn't be usable data.
Well, it, it will be considered, but not given as much weight, because it was private, yes.
Generally speaking, though, I would, I tend to assume that it's a private transaction. The value that may be reflected is actually sometimes less than...
We, we don't know what was included in that sale. There could have been a couple of Rolls Royces, you know what I mean? We really don't know. Sorry, Charles.
I guess my point is generally, you don't include the Rolls Royces, because you want that transaction cost.
Right, but the other sales aren't, aren't corresponding. You know what I mean? We had two good sales at 84th Street, and then the one at 88th Street, and even the one at 86th Street a couple of years ago, so that's three.
I'm just playing devil's advocate. I would think it would be incumbent upon the purchaser to come in and appeal that, and say, "Hey, why isn't it 10 million? You explained that."
No, she's saying it's an anomaly that that happened, because it didn't happen with the other two properties, so they, they would be the norm.
Well, they were listed on the open, they were listed on the MLS. They were marketed through the MLS. That, I, I know it went through, done samples somehow, but I don't know the details. You know, where did he find this $10 million buyer? How did he get that $10 million seller? I mean, it's private.
But I guess I'm saying, why is it, why is it for us to second guess?
Well, there's 26 reasons we can throw out a sale, and that's one of them. Other than that, I'm crazy busy. I'm in the weeds. I'm not just in the weeds, they're covering me, I'm being swallowed. Somebody emailed me today, "I need a weed whacker." So does my husband. Anyway, but just, you know, if, if the construction office is busy, I'm busy, and it just keeps rolling.
Which is a good thing.
Yes. Any questions? All right, thank you. Margaret. Have a good night.
Construction zoning? No capital requests for them either.
Mayor, council? All right. This past month, November, there were seven demolitions, five new homes. I had probably, I guess approximately about 40 inspections, which is average, a little above average, as far as what's going on in town. The reeds has started. They have the first section of the footing for that in. Hasn't been inspected yet, but they're, they're moving right along. It's going to be probably a two- or three-week process for the footing itself, before they actually get some steel set, get the slab poured for it, so it's a work in progress. It's going to, once you see the footing in, and they get the slab set for the, the first floor, you'll see the structure start to go up pretty quick, because it's, a lot of it's prefab, so. Right now, you won't see anything for, you know, it's all level ground. We'll, we'll see something probably in a couple of weeks, two or three weeks. The building permits for this past month, November, were about 57, as opposed to 61 last year, but in the big picture, we're still over, we're more than we were last year, from start to finish, as far as January to December. There were 60, I'd say 61 last year, 57 this year. That's about all I have.
And that includes everything from like plumbing permits, electric permits, like when you say 57 building permits, what does that encompass?
All those numbers reflect the same numbers with all electric, plumbing, and fire, pretty much. We, more than, normally, we'll have more building permits than any other permits, because of roofs, siding, any of the other smaller permits, any kind of renovation stuff that goes on, so we'll always be higher in the building aspect of it than the other disciplines, so, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I have, compared to the same time last year, and I wasn't here last year, so a lot of the things, and a lot of what was done in the past was not on computers, so it's a lot harder to trace and not being here, but what we did find is there were, the same time last year, in Novem, yeah, November, there were 32 zoning permits last year. We issued 32 this year, same number. The transfers were 13 in 2016, and nine in 2017 for real estate transfers. 14 street opening permits last year, 15 this year. So, the numbers are pretty close to what they were a year ago, from what we found. And I am, have started, like, street openings, I do have those on a computer now, so next year, I'll be better, it'll be easier to trace. And we're working on the others as well, the zonings and the street openings. I have started with, along with the realty transfers, we used to give out several copies, and in being green, I am no longer, the real estate agents now can make their own copies for all of their various, people they want to share it with, other agencies, and the title agency, and all, so we're saving a little bit of paper in that. It's not much, but, and so far as violations go, we have ongoing, you might say arbitration with the gas company over the street openings in, on First Avenue, for the newly paved street. It's, it's going back and forth right now. We met yesterday, and they're, we're waiting for their counter on what they want to do, but we're going to, we're standing pretty firm on that one.
I'm standing strong on our fines.
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, I didn't realize you could counter a fine.
I don't either. Well, it's, yeah.
I'm going to try that. When I get a porking ticket.
Sure you will.
What do you say we do, Tim?
Right, did you say, you said when you first started zoning, somebody zoning, zoning permits?
Zoning permits for the month of November last year were 32, and this year, we did 32.
For the month? Okay, so, so if, so if somebody applies for something having to do with zoning, they get a permit from your office?
Correct.
You approve it?
Yes.
Okay. And then the real estate transfer?
I also do real estate transfer inspections with Roger. I do the, I do the tax portion, or how many bedrooms, bathrooms, and such, and he does the fire safety.
Okay, no, I got you now. I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thanks, Ray.
Okay, next, CFO.
I'm working on, sorry, currently working on year-end schedules and schedules for the 2018 budget and the 2017 audit. In addition to that, going over things, I was wondering if council would be agreeable to setting up a dedication by rider for accumulated absentee, accumulated absences? And that's be a fund that we set up to fund when we have a retiree and there's a payout. The liability at the end of last year was $161,000. Now, that represents an amount that's more theoretical than anything, as if everybody retired on that date, and they were fully eligible for all the sick time and vacation, or not sick time, vacation time, every comp time earned to them. But I was thinking we could start funding this, maybe to a number around $75,000, somewhere between $50,000 and $75,000, and you cancel, and fund it by canceling some salary wages at year-end, and moving it to that line. It'd be a kind of a painless way to do it, and we could do it as we need it.
And that is something that, I think in the best practice, every year, sometimes it shows up, some, sometimes it doesn't on, on the state's list, but it is something that they recommended. They did start requiring municipalities a few years ago to keep track of it and actually put it on your budget document, so you are aware of what that potential is. And then the second push was to start trying to fund some of these liabilities, so I do think it is a, a good recommendation to do that, especially with canceling some unf, you know, some balances that would just lapse two years, basically two years from now, into surplus. Use that, so there's no increase in your budget next year for it, so I think it would be wise if we started doing that.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Now, would we just put that, would we have to do a resolution?
Yeah, the resolution, send it up to the state, and send it through a sample.
Okay, so for the next meeting, unless we hear otherwise, we'll put something on, a resolution to, two resolutions, one to cancel the balances, and the other one for the dedication.
Can, can I ask you to put that in layman terms? Because I must be the only person up here that doesn't understand what you're talking about. So, just, you know...
Which, which part? The liability?
Part from the beginning, when Jim started.
The unfunded liability?
Yeah, what are we going to do now?
We have, the, all, all of the borough employees
Right.
are entitled to certain amount of vacation time, depending on how long they've been here. Some have been able to accumulate more than others. Some of the newer employees, you basically have to use it within a certain amount of period, so the liability, what you owe that employee, if they were to leave tomorrow, isn't as large as some of the other employees.
Okay.
But we do have, I think it's an estimated, a little over 200, $161,000 potential, if, like Jim said, everyone decided tomorrow, we're all out of here.
Okay.
You would have to come up, you would have to come up with that additional money.
Right, right. So, this is to, to have a separate line item in the budget that would account for that?
Correct, and it would go into a dedicated fund, and that's all it would be used for, so if some, when someone does retire, that payout would be charged to that account, opposed to a separate salary line.
We wouldn't have to take it from Public Works. We could just...
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Correct. And all that being said, we need to make it clear that Stone Harbor is probably one of the municipalities in the state that, I mean, if you looked at that same figure in neighboring communities, you'd be shocked at what they'd have to have.
Oh, yeah, there, there's communities that are over millions.
We don't have the boat payouts that they talk about with police officers and things like that. There's nowhere near those payouts happening in Stone Harbor that happen other places, and never has.
Correct, yes. Stone Harbor has been very good with that. Stone Harbor has been very good with that. Do we limit?
Depends on who you're talking to.
Do we limit the time an employee can save a vacation, that they must use it after a certain time? Or do we just allow them to bank it? Yes, all the newer employees, and I forget, I'd have to go back and look at the exact date, but current employees, you would have to, any vacation you have, you, I believe it's a year you have to, to utilize it. That's what I thought. But there are employees that have been here for quite a long time, that have accumulated time than when we didn't have that requirement on the books. So, this is a housekeeping thing? Yes. And as they leave, this will go away? Correct. Okay.
This was done in A&amp;F two years ago, when we put that into process with that, and grandfathered, the older employees and the newer employees had to...
Yeah, I think, I think it was actually before
Before you came, even.
Before I came, yeah, a little bit before I came, but it was, it was very proactive, so. Got it. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Borough clerk?
I don't have any capital items either.
I saw that.
Borough clerk's report for the month of November, fees taken in $670.65, and in the construction office, fees taken in $88,408. That's all I have.
Next would be engineer.
Okay, thank you. We have two grant applications that we're still waiting to hear back on. That is a 2018 DOT grant and the 2018 Small Cities Grant. We normally hear on the Small Cities Grant by now, but for whatever reason, this year, they're just a little late in, in announcing. So, I did, I did check today, and there's no news yet. Under capital projects, we have a few projects winding down. The Outfall Project, the Road Program, Golden Gate, and First Avenue are all in closeout. Our, our drainage project is moving ahead. 95th Street, we, we're authorized to start the second phase, so we'll get moving on that. The Police Building, I believe, is being awarded tonight, so once that's awarded, we can move ahead with the pre-con and get construction scheduled. And no word yet on, I'm sorry, the Bike Way Program is moving ahead. That design's almost done. Other than that, you have any questions for me?
So, that the bike, the, that's the open space, or whatever it is, the collaborative county? When would that, the design's done, and then in the spring, would that begin, or what would happen?
It's a, it's not a big project, so it is something we could get done in the springtime and have it ready for the summer season. The plans are essentially complete. I know we were working with Grant and with Miranda to kind of tweak the final design before we kind of really finished it up and got it out to bid. There were some design alternatives that could go one way or the other, more of a preferential-type decision, so I think there was a meeting with one of my guys, met with, met with, met with those folks, and we're, we're right there. So, as soon as we can make a decision on how we want to wrap the design up, we can go out to bid. Again, and not a, not a real big project, so it is something that could get done, you know, in the springtime and have it ready to roll.
And how's the payout on that? Is the county going, is, you know how with open space, the money does, you put money out, so on and so forth, like, how is the payment going to go on that?
It would work the same way. We would, we would put the money out, and then they would reimburse us. But I agree that we highly, highly recommend that we get this done before spring. Yeah.
If we can.
If we can, right. I mean, we're in winter. To do this in the summertime would not be...
Oh, no.
Right, to have it done well before summer, yes.
Yes, absolutely.
That's the plan.
Yeah, if, if for some reason it appeared that it could not be done, we would just delay it till the fall.
Till the fall, okay.
So, when, when would we hear about this, the ADA grant, the grant for the...
That's the Small Cities? That's just...
Yeah, normally, they announce that right around league time.
So, that's, okay, that's the same grant you're talking about?
Yep.
Yes. Right around what time did you...
The league. They usually announce it around the convention. I don't know if it's with the transition, with the new governor coming in, if maybe that has, it's gotten lost in the mix, but normally, around now is when we hear a decision on that. So, as soon as I know something, I'll let, you know, I'll make sure I let all you guys know.
Because that, that's in, that item is in the, the capital budget?
Yes.
Correct? But there's no mention of any grant dollars, so we're...
Correct.
We're hoping that it's awarded, and we can use that money, correct?
Yes. Fingers crossed.
And it could be because of the change in politics, like Ed said. The new governor might want to be the one to announce. That would be like, one of the first things the new governor would want to do. So, that's why they think it's held up.
Are there any, like, preliminary designs for that facility, or sketches, or, oh, there are? Okay.
Yeah. Planning board. Oh.
We have not met since my last planning board report, October or Novem, I think the, the dates got a little mixed up, so we have not met since I gave the last report. The only thing that I can report is we have nailed down Atlantic City Electric with a meeting, which will be held on January 11th, with this undergrounding feasibility study that Mott and Associates has gotten together for us through the planning board. So, that is January 11th at 9:30. And the, those members of the governing body, they're going to be attending that meeting. It's going to be myself, Councilman Parsick, and Councilman Craftcheck, and we will be reporting back as to how that goes, once we're there.
Judy, is this study, this feasible study, any different than the one that was done? It is, you're, he's shaking his head already. And, and in what respect is it different than the one we paid for before?
Well, it's an independent review, which is being conducted by Mott and Associates, so we're really hoping we get some numbers that we can rely on. The first, one of the biggest issues we had with the first proposal, or estimate, if you will, was that there was a major amount left up in the air in terms of a contingency. So, when they, the numbers were really not concrete, and so they're very hard to rely on. So, this is, this is more of what I would refer to as an independent review, and, you know, it's, it's, it's independent of Atlantic City Electric giving us the numbers. I think we, we can put more faith, if we do our own homework and due diligence.
I agree. It's more non-biased.
Exactly.
And it also is not, it's going to take into account the possibilities of doing this over time. It's not just if it happens in one fell swoop, in one project, so that all different angles are going to be addressed, as opposed to just, what's that figure? And we're hoping to get just a, and something that everybody can be confident is a true and accurate figure.
Then we actually, we actually meet tomorrow for the Master Plan Subcommittee Review. That meeting's tomorrow, so nothing to report until after that, but progress is steady, and we're on track to complete everything in the, in the time allotted, so I think we're in really good shape.
Anybody else?
That's it for A&amp;F.
That's it for A&amp;F. And that's it for capital budget requests through A&amp;F, was just that one printer?
It was just utilities, no Public Works out there.
Yeah, that third, yeah.
No, but I'm just saying, just A&amp;F, though. There's nothing in capital out of A&amp;F.
No.
It's just all grant wants, all kinds of stuff, is that what it's going to be?
The only one that wants to spend our money. He's been good.
So, that being said, I guess we'll move on to Public Works.
Yes, I do have capital requests.
Yes, you do.
All right. I'm going to leave the infrastructure to, to Jill, because of all the grants and whatnot have to be discussed, which comes into play with the... which comes into play with the total numbers. We're looking at, uh, Public Works. And the request for this year is a new Packer, um, some extra ADA money for the crossovers and the restroom improvements at Ninety-Fifth Street. Uh, beach access improvements, which are other than the handicap ramps, um, that need a lot of work. That's what the two hundred and four is for. Uh, heavy equipment, I need a new beach tractor. The beach tractor that I have is eleven years old. And, uh, the only thing it does is it works on the beach every single day, all summer long. And actually, uh, both of them are in need of replacement, but, uh, we're going to go with one for this year. We don't want to have, we don't want to buy them, two of them in the same year and have them both go down at the same time. Let me see, let me catch up here.
When do we stop breaking the beach?
Um, well, it all depends. Normally it's, it's, uh, we scale back after Labor Day. And we, uh, we'll do it on like Friday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. This year, I actually did it on Sundays because of the nice weather.
Okay.
So, um, we pulled somebody off of our streets or, or automotive, depending on who was available.
So once the season's over, it's just kind of weather-driven and people-driven or how you see it driven?
Yep. And bonfires and.
And bonfires and such?
So we want the beaches to look, um, the best as we possibly can, so. Uh, also, we need a new skid steer for the beach. The, uh, two thousand and nine, um, John Deere that we have now is falling apart. All the hydraulics lines and, and panels and, and gears and the underside of the, of the tractor are slowly rotting away and it's cost, it's not cost-efficient to continue to, to replace those parts. And, uh, the cab is falling apart and whatnot. Um, I have to replace two new kiosk machines on project number seven. The two original kiosks that we have, um, one of them is at, at the beach and then the one at the water tower. The guts, they don't make any. The, the modems, the, the controllers, the, the displays, um, the features that they have, it's, um, old technology that are in the both of those machine, machines, and they're not going to support them anymore. So I have to buy two new ones. That's what the, um, the kiosks are for, the two new purchases. Uh, service vehicles, I have a two thou, a thousand and four and a two thousand and six utility truck. One is used right now for the grounds department, the other one's in the beach department. It's used on the beach, it's rotting away. The one that we use for watering the flowers in town, what we do is we take the oldest truck in the fleet that is usable and we move it down. So we'll use that one, uh, for the water truck because it's always got water in it and, and, uh, it's not used as much as, as all the others. So we're going to pull the truck from, um, from, uh, one of the departments, uh, one of the older trucks from one of the other departments and, uh, move it down. There's actually a hole in the roof of the truck. We can, we can fix the hole, but, um, the truck itself is in need of replacement. And it is one of our plow trucks that we use for, that's what the, that is for. Curbing and sidewalk, we're replacing curbs and sidewalks in, in town. Um, I have a lot around Public Works, there's a few spots on the, um, Bird Sanctuary, um, as well as we're constantly replacing, um, older sidewalks, like along, um, the tennis courts here on Ninety-Fifth Street, Ninety-Sixth Street, Ninety-Sixth, Ninety-Seventh Street. That's what that funds. Number ten, um, beach end bulk, beach end and. And, uh, bay end bulkheads repairs, Nineteen Hundred and Fourteenth Street. Got a quote for, um, four hundred thousand to replace that. That is about twice the, the length of a regular bulkhead because we have all of John's Beach and Nineteen Hundred and Fourteenth Street that we have to replace. And it's rotting out from the bottom. It's a, it's an old Creosote wooden bulkhead that needs to be replaced. That's what that is. Number eleven.
Grant, can I, can I just ask you, those bulkheads then, that four hundred thousand is strictly for Nineteen Hundred and Fourteenth Street, right?
Yes.
And then in two thousand and nineteen and twenty, there are other bulkheads that are listed here?
There may be, right now, all of our bay ends, except for, um, Ninety-Fourth Street and Nineteen Hundred and Fourteenth Street are, are vinyl. They're all newer.
All right, yeah, I'm just.
And I'm not sure if we're going to have to raise them when we change the, um, the elevations. So there may be, there may not be, depending on the, our height.
All right.
Of our bulkheads. I think my, all of ours are pretty consistent at seven and a half, so we might be all right with the older bulkheads. There are some that are leaking, some that need to be repaired, um, that can be done in regular operating budget.
Okay, okay.
Can you go back to marine maintenance vessel slash platform?
That's where we're at.
Okay.
I have a John boat, which is an aluminum John boat. How, how to, how long is it? Twelve feet, fourteen footer? That we use to, um, to do our maintenance on, on, on the bulkheads, on our asphalt pipes, on our marina. We've been getting more and more requests to remove materials from people's dock areas, uh, from storms, old, old dock material. And the boat that we have now is not safe to do what we're trying to do, and I would like to replace it with a, an, another aluminum boat with a bigger engine and it's safer for the guys to, to get out on the water and do the work they have to do. That's what that one is. Uh, beach asphalt repairs, uh, we have not done any repairs to Nineteen Hundred and Fourteenth Street. Luckily, in, in two thousand and seventeen, we were able to do some repairs on, on one fourteen. If you go out to Nineteen Hundred and Fourteenth Street, half the, um, there are five cradles that are broken and there are two pieces of pipe that are actually laying in the water. And this is in conjunction to the, the estimates that we got from, uh, two different contractors. At fifty-two thousand dollars is what's going to cost us to, uh, repair Nineteen Hundred and Fourteenth Street. That's to take out the existing pilings that are in the water that you can't see at high tide and to reset the, um, the, the pipe that's in the water right now that we can salvage and redo the cradles.
When, when are we going to remove the asphalt pipe at Nineteen Hundred and Fourteenth Street?
When we figure out which way, where we're going to direct it, um, in this stormwater program.
During that, and, and this can't.
It cannot wait.
It cannot wait because I see us throwing fifty-two thousand dollars.
It's there, DE, DEP knows that we're trying to get it fixed, but we just didn't have the capital in, in place in order to do it.
But we physically are not going to do this, someone's going to do this.
No, we'll have a contractor come in.
Right, okay. When you say we, I'm thinking, we're going to do that?
We, we as in we're paying for it.
Got it.
Unfortunately. Yes, um, especially with the surveys we had done and the, and the, um, the beach replenishment that we've had done with the inspectors that, that DEP sends out, they know that it's, this problem exists and it has to be taken care of. Grounds equipment, number thirteen, that's just a general, we, we, uh, turn over some of our equipment every, every, um, five years. Um, and that's to replace some of the, the items that are projected. Mid-mound mowers, tractors, aerators, and, and so on. Building improvements. I have doors, um, garage doors that are original from twenty-five years ago. No, actually, I've been here longer than that, thirty-one years ago, when the, when the building was built that needed to be replaced. And as you can see down in the, um, in the summary, I have nine ten-foot doors, I have nine sixteen-foot doors and, um, some upgrades to the interior of the, of those buildings that need to be done. And those are the cost estimates as of, um, last month to replace those, those doors. We've been doing a lot of repairs to them, just trying to get by. But, uh, I'm afraid for the safety of my employees and liability that they need to be replaced. Security cameras and fencing, um, this is to replace fencing in, in Public Works. Not just Public Works, but damaged fence on, on any of the properties, the tennis courts, um, ball field if necessary, and security cameras. We had, um, we have five cameras right now in place that, uh, at Public Works um, to see our fuel pumps, um, our Packer barn. The entrance to our, our main entrance off Eighty-first Street to our offices, as well as two out on, on, um, Third Avenue that record constantly twenty-four hours a day. We had one just facing the, the marina that, uh, let us know when the tide was coming up or if it was snowing. I can actually, Rocky can see and Craig can see them on our phones. So if we know that a storm is getting bad and we need to bring people in and we're not here at the time, we can do so. And I also, the, the police officers can also come and view them. We had a, a golf cart that was stolen this, this summer. Unfortunately, I only have one camera facing, uh, Third Avenue, now I have two, one's facing, uh, Avalon, so we can keep an eye on them. As well as the flooding that comes from, um, Avalon, like today and the last few days. So, we can keep an eye on that kind of stuff. It's very beneficial that we keep these up and running. We're also talking about other areas of, um, placing cameras. We, uh, received a camera from the Bird Sanctuary, um, that we would like to utilize that somewhere in town. We were talking about possibly putting that camera over at the, um, beach shack.
Yeah.
So that surfers can see what the tide is and, and the, um, out-of-towners can see how the surf conditions are and the weather conditions here in town and possibly putting that on our, on our website.
Yeah, and the people that aren't here in town can just kind of look at the webcam and, yeah, I think that would go over very well.
You're welcome.
So that will fund, um, that operation, um, for improvements and replacements if necessary. Same thing with number sixteen, we had a generator, we lost the, um, the radiator at the firehouse. How much did that cost us, Rocky? About eight, eight thousand, just for the generator? Yeah. We actually got it for almost half price because we had it actually built instead of buying it through Modern and having them ship it from overseas. We were lucky to get it in half the time that it, that would have taken. So, this is just emergency money, just in case one of the generators in town, non-watering sewer, um, goes down and we have to do major repairs to it. We may use it, we may not. Hopefully, we won't have to use that money. Uh, number seventeen is, um, repetitive every year for replacing the trash and recycling cans here in the business district as well as on the beach. Last year, we had to replace about sixteen, eighteen of the frames for the, um, for the beach cans because they rotted out from the salt air. Street signs, um, we did a, we did a cost estimate on the Tomcat system that we have out there now. It consists of, of, um, four sides of framework, of aluminum framework, as well as two, single-sided, um, signs that have the numbers on it or the street name. And they cost us twice as much as if we went to, want, changed them out to, um, the same as Avalon has or, or the other, um, communities have. It's, the, the ones we have up right now, within two years, we're going to have to replace them all because the frameworks is all rotting out, the posts are rotting out. And I'm just trying to be proactive on this. So I'm bringing this forward to replace the Tomcats with the more traditional sign, instead of the decorative ones that we have in place now. That's up to you guys if you want to do that or not, or stick with the old Tomcats. So this would, uh, help us in phase one of replacing, um, forty-four blocks times, um, five, um, three, um, the beach block, the, the, um, middle of town, the bay block, as well as, uh, the four hundred and five hundred blocks of town. So probably estimated cost would be around, I'd say about seventy thousand dollars to finish out. This would be phase one. We did this about, uh, two thousand and six. We changed out all the Tomcats and it's taken us ten years, or actually eleven or twelve years for them to get to the point where they're in need of being replaced. We did the same thing, we did, uh, we did one major block at a time. It was, um, the two hundred block and then we did the one hundred block and then we did the, the bayside after that. Uh, number nineteen is for, uh, maintenance equipment, safety and radios. I combined all this stuff from before because we're in pretty good shape when it comes to, um, barricades, the plastic barricades. I don't know, we're going to need to talk about the parade and if we're going to keep it the way we are now. We're concerned about, um, the situation in front of the reeds as well as, um, in front of Borough Hall. This, every year, I, I stage right here on Ninety-Fifth Street and the, the crowd was so large that there was people all the way up to Ninety-Fifth Street, on the island, as well as in front of Borough Hall. And my concern, and I'm, I'm also get some backing from the Police Department, that we were having to back the people off, back off of the street in order to keep the, uh, the area safe. And I'm concerned about that, so that's what this, uh, twelve thousand dollars is for. The average cost for one barricade is about, uh, two hundred and ninety, ninety dollars a piece. I know we need about twenty-five of them, um, right here in front of Borough Hall and I'm not sure. Rocky and I talked about thirty of them, um, to make it safe in front of the reeds, if we're going to continue to have, um, the announcement.
Could we ever go straight down Ninety-Sixth? Pass, and now we couldn't, fire company, so it's always going to have to.
Yes.
Then going, always have to turn and go north.
It, statistically, it works that, um, better that way because of the fact that, um, if we send everybody out into the beach block, it gets jammed up.
Right, and then plus you'd be putting barricades in front of the firehouse, I guess, as well.
Right, and that way, if there is an issue and they need to get out, they can go down to First Avenue and they can.
Right, that makes sense.
Anywhere in town from there. If we block them off, then, then you have pedestrians scrambling, fire, fire. Firefighters coming from, um, other areas in town with their vehicles, it can be a little chaotic.
It was surprising how many more people were in that, like, circle.
Yes.
At the end.
Yep.
There's a lot of people there.
Yeah. So, that's, that's for safety reasons. LED lighting, we're continuing to, to, um, change out a lot of the, um, LEDs in, in, um, our, on our buildings in our parking lots. Um, our next, uh, attack would be the Ninety-Fifth Street parking lot down here and replace all the globes that are out there and the, and the hi-hats that are out there now. And that's what this, um, five thousand dollars would help replace them. Solid waste vehicle repairs. This is for the trash trucks, every year we would put, uh, money aside. Okay, Rocky tells me the radiator costs us thirteen thousand dollars for one radiator at the firehouse. So that's it, that is one of our bigger units, um, I don't think many of them would cost that much. Anyway, we put money away, um, for the, the steel that we have to replace, the, um, the flooring in our, in our Packers and on our, um, our waste trucks. We have a flatbed, uh, truck that, the, um, the sides are made of metal, the floors made of metal, the Packer floors are made of metal, and constantly putting materials in there wears the metal out and they need to be replaced. And that's why that five thousand dollars is in there to replace those.
Question, Grant, could that be, is that an O and E thing more than a capital thing or no?
O and E.
Yeah, if it's, if it's an annual thing, that's, I'm just curious how it ends up here in capital as opposed to.
We, I was discussing with, um, with Jim about, uh, O and E capital. Uh, we haven't gotten into that yet.
Okay.
If we can work something like that out to get it out of here and put it into the operating budget, I have no problem with that.
Does that make sense?
We just need that, that funding to replace, uh, that material and it can be costly.
Interesting, okay.
Maintenance equipment, twenty-two. This is to replace our, our larger, um, equipment and this I've. This is to replace our, our larger equipment, and this I, if we can, we can work it into the regular operating budget, is, is fine with me. But there's, there's constantly large pumps, the automotive department, the, the Buildings Department, the Streets Department that has equipment that needs to be changed out, and that's what this funding is for. I'm almost done, I promise. Street lines. Last year we did twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of line replacement, the solid yellow li, yellow lines in the street. The, the parking spaces in the middle of town were done, and we're branching out and further out. We were required to have stop lines at every stop sign, which we don't have at this point. As we replace our streets, it's getting done. When, when the gas company came in and did their repairs, I required them, we required them to replace that stop line, so they're getting done. But we're out, outside of our compliance, we need to get that done, and that's what this funding is for. To continue that project. Landscape improvements. This is so we can renovate our landscape, any buildings, any of the islands that need to be done, any of the small project areas around town. The smaller islands around town. As you see in the breakdown in the bottom, we had discussions in Public Works to take away the grates that are in, in the middle of town, around the trees, because of the root systems that are buckling the, the steel grates, and replacing them with what's called a porous surface. It's pretty much the same surface as the playground has at Chelsea Place. And we would take the metal out, and then pour the surface in there, and it would make it safer. That way we don't have to go in and, and, we've been going in and cutting the roots down. Every time you cut the root, it blisters, the root blisters, and now you got a big old wad of material that's pushing the grates up. So we've been trying to manage, manage it that way, but it's getting out of hand. If you walk down Ninety-Sixth Street, you'll see quite a few of the grates, even the framework is starting to buckle and, and push out of the ground, and it's becoming unsafe.
And it's not healthy for the trees.
It isn't, it's not healthy. I don't like carving roots, when you're not supposed to. So, that is Public Works.
It's a lot of stuff, it's a lot of stuff. But they do a lot of things, too.
Is this a good time for questions?
Sure.
When, when Joan, when you and Joan started the, the additional trash pickups this summer, on the weekends and whatnot? I thought you, you had indicated that the vehicle you had wasn't really equipped to do that, or wasn't sufficient. Do you remember you had that
Additional trash on the beach.
All the stuff piled in the, in the in the trailer that you were towing down the beach?
The Jeep, the Jeep with the trailer.
This one here, yeah. So, I mean, is, is your budget, you have that covered in here, that you're gonna get a vehicle that's sufficient to do that work, or you figured out another way to do it?
No, my only concern was actually getting on the beach at the right time, and not going on the beach when there's people on the beach. Because there's not a lot of room between, between the sand fence and, and the high tide line.
Okay.
That was my big concern, having a large amount of people on the beach and trying to traverse through there, like, you know, you gotta do it if it's an ambulance call, or, or fire, you know, you know EMS call, but
They're just making additional trips. In other words, what you saw was a complete overload, so now, rather than have a complete overload, or make the tires go flat, they do additional trips with it. Rather than have something bigger. I think when we discussed it, if we were having a larger vehicle to transport that head, we're talking about the really bulk things, the chairs and all that. That it would, I think Craig said, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it would sink into the ground, that we couldn't have anything that heavy. So, therefore, that one that we have there just makes additional trips.
If we were to change out the operation that we do now, we'd have to get a, we'd have to get a new vehicle, we'd have to change out the trash cans that we use right now, into an automated system, where you got an arm that goes in and throws the trash in the back. It's a little bit costly. What we're doing right now is sufficient.
This works, okay, that's, I just, you know, I thought there was something there we had to address, but I guess not.
Actually, it's, the adding those extra pickups in the evening hours is, has made the effort easier in the daytime, in the morning, to, to clear the beach of materials. Because we're taking out half of, of the route, that we call it, by doing the night pickup. It's helping.
Okay, I, I
It's more manpower and more salary generated than it is capital generated.
Okay, the, the street signs, you, you said that you needed counsel to make some kind of determination on what to do with the
Yes, I don't want to make a decision on changing out the, the style of the signs that we have now without your permission.
Okay, is that, but is that something we have to do in the near future?
I can't, I even sit here and try to picture them, I'm trying to picture them.
So that's in the budget?
That'll come back into Public Works.
They're fancy ones now, yeah. There'll be
We don't need, he doesn't need an answer now.
I don't need an answer.
No.
Just take a look at it.
But it's something
So just go take a look at them, and look at, look at ours and look at Avalon's, and we'll know what we're looking
Yes.
Okay.
Or actually, we can take pictures and bring them to the next council.
The signs they have in Avalon are two-sided. You have one piece of metal with two, it's printed on both sides right now. We have, we have two pieces of metal printed on one side. And then they're married together inside of the framework of the sign, so now you have, you have two of them stacked on top of each other.
Okay, and that's the Tomcat?
That's called a Tomcat.
Okay. So we can go look at them, okay.
Before he, Grant moves on to utility, he did, he skipped over real quick and said he was punting to me on the Public Works infrastructure improvements. At the orig, what he originally
A little complicated, so
Skipped over the six million.
What Grant had originally requested was for the five street beach block ends on Ninety-Second Street from Third Avenue to Sunset, and that was originally one million eighty thousand. We had a meeting yesterday to go over two projects. One, Ninety-Fifth Street, because it entails a couple grants, and it also entails the fixing of the roadway from the Atlantic Electric improvements. And then the second thing was to make sure we were accounting for all the expenses for the resiliency grant, plus our road and sewer improvements that we would do at the same time, since we would be ripping up the roads. So with that said, as the engineers are, have been getting more into the actual design of the project, the original estimate, which was very preliminary, was right around three million. Right now, it appears it's closer to four million for the actual project. Then you have your inspection costs around two hundred thousand, which we're estimating a little high. So that's total project, four point two million, our grant is two point seven million, which means we have to budget basically one point five million. Then the road work, attribute, or our road work that we would add into that is seven hundred and thirty thousand. Our sewer, water and sewer would be eight hundred and twenty thousand, that'll show up in a separate budget. So, in addition to the one point one oh eight oh, the grant needed, we also need at least another two point two, almost two point three, to cover the resiliency grant and our road work. And in addition to that, we also have to fund the floodgates, and we're doing the analysis on that one, so we're not sure what that cost is gonna be. So, our estimate, what we've now went from one million eighty thousand to four million eighty thousand, just a small change, slight change. Throwing it out there, I can't even write that. Now Grant can go to sewer.
This, this resiliency grant is, are we, what, what is that again?
It's the flood project. That's the flood project.
That's, that's the flood mitigation.
Flood mitigation.
That's the two point seven?
Yes.
And that's the pump station, and all that, the lift station. Right, the lift station.
Yep.
So this four is in addition to what we're getting, the two point seven?
Correct.
Well, the four, the, wait a minute, the, the, the four is the total of the project, right? So we have to fund the two point seven minus the four, we have to fund the difference.
Correct.
Right?
Plus the soft costs, right.
Correct.
Okay, so, yeah, so basically we're getting two point seven to do a four million dollar project.
That's right.
Right?
Correct.
So that, what you just described, the four point all the way up to, we're taking two point seven off of that, what we need to fund? Right, that's where we're, yes, okay.
Because you've got the, the two point, almost two point three that we have to fund for our share of the project. Then in addition, we're also doing our normal road program work, where we put the conduits under, we pave the road, we also do improve our water and sewer. For the road portion, which we would charge the general capital, is an additional seven hundred and thirty thousand. We would add to that. Then the unknown is the cost for the floodgates. And one, one million eighty thousand is for the five beach blocks and Ninety-Second Street from Third Avenue to Sunset. That's where we come up with a total of four million eighty thousand. Sorry.
In addition to the two point seven?
Correct.
For four separate projects, right?
Yes, four, yeah, it's not all one, it's not all one.
Right.
And that, and that, so that's, that's to finish Ninety-Fifth Street?
Mm-hmm. All of Ninety-Fifth. Yep.
And then the Ninety-Third Street pump station?
Yes.
Correct?
That's, yep.
And, and then the ten block, roughly ten blocks, in our normal road resurfacing program?
Correct.
You're also capturing the water from Ninety-Ninth Street to Eighty-Ninth, as well as the yacht club area in the storm, in the
So there's storm, there's storm drain work in here as well?
Yes.
Correct.
So to that four million eighty thousand, we're still gonna add floodgates? At some point, when you figure out what
In the four million eighty thousand, the floodgate is covered in there. You're coming back for anymore? Now, as
Okay.
As we develop this, and we get more, better estimates on the floodgate and stuff like that, before we actually go in to do the bond ordinance, that'll be tweaked. Okay, these numbers are on the higher side, because I'd rather have the extra not needed than have to try to come back, do an emergency appropriation to create a bond ordinance.
And this includes the, because I recall over the past several meetings, all this, you know, we would see these documents come through saying so much in a grant for Ninety-Fifth Street from
Correct.
The county, and that, that's all in these numbers.
Yes, that's all accounted for in there.
Is there anything in there the county would be doing on Third Avenue?
Yes, I believe the county's gonna be doing their own work, that'll be coordinated with our project.
Correct. And if there's anything, as we're meeting with them, one of the things that Ray has been, Ray Roberts has been doing, if there is work that we wind up doing that's actually for them, we would get that reimbursement, we, at this point, we just don't know what that would be.
Okay, so you're, you, we want to add this in the two thousand and eighteen budget request?
Yes. Grant's already has added it, I don't, he sent this out today, you guys do not have that, that's why I'm verbally telling that to you.
And the project locations, they all have to be done at one time with this project, with the flood mitigation?
That, well, that's, that's been identified, yes.
It's gonna be a two-phase project. It's gonna start next year and then continue on into the
With the following year.
So to stay on track with our road program, we really, it behooves us to do this, to do those extra ten blocks. And those ten blocks, it goes without saying, they're gonna have all the laterals put in and all the
Yes.
The accoutrements that we need to have to go along with it, right, looking, looking to the future.
Yes. And this is Public Works' responsibility in this, in this packet here. Then you have the water and sewer responsibilities on top of that. Because you can't mix the two, they have to be separate.
Now you can talk to each other.
Ready?
Yep.
Here we go. I got twenty minutes. Okay. Project one is, is a continued, continuing of the infrastructure that we just talked about, and that is the water and sewer responsibilities. Number two is meter and ner, change outs. We discussed this in, in, in the Water and Sewer Committee meetings. This would help us to change out one, about one-third of all our erts that are in the ground right now. And most, about, that many are not functioning right now. And we are reading them by, by sight, instead of reading them electronically. Number three is GIS studies and upgrades. When we do a road program, we have a GIS system, where we, we take the road program and we marry it into the, the GIS system, so that my staff can go and, and look at the GIS and see exactly where our water meters are, where our valves are, where our stormwater is, where, and it's not in the, the capital projects for the road programs, it's separate for them to create those, those overlays that go into the program. And that's what this fifteen would be for. Generators, the same thing we talked about earlier. This is for the water and sewer side, for any emergency repairs that we need to do. This one I'm gonna take out, because I think we have enough money in Public Works to handle number five, stormwater improvements. We're having issues down at Hundred and Eighteenth Street with the heavy stormwater problems we're having with these four inches and one-hour storms that we've been having. And the water can't get from the east side of Hundred Seventeenth, Hundred Eighteenth Street to the west side, which takes it down to Third Avenue and out to the bay. I've, I've gotten pictures from the homeowners, I've actually gone down there and taken video of myself, and seeing the actual percolation coming out of the, the stormwater grates on the west side of Hundred Eighteenth Street. And it actually looked like a fall, like a, like a natural spring, actually pushing up through the grate, because it was choked out so bad that it couldn't get the water. Gravity's pushing it, so it's, it looks like a fountain. And that needs to be taken care of soon. So, I put the, the hundred thousand dollars in there to take care of that, as well as Paradise and a few other places where the actual storm drains are, the vaults are actually collapsing, and we need to repair them and replace them.
But that's never, has that happened before, that flooding that you just talked about, coming up the grate on those streets? I mean, that's new.
It's getting worse as the houses get bigger, I'll, I'll say that. Where the houses were smaller and they were able to absorb it into the ground around the buildings, yes, it was able to handle it. But we, if, and Rocky can attest to this, he went to a class up at LIG. The, the frequency of the amount of storms that we're getting, and the amount of rain at, at one period of time, is astronomical, the changes that are happening. I don't believe in global warming, but that's what they say it is, and our, and our system down there cannot handle it. And we've cleaned out Hundred and Twenty-Third Street, we've cleaned out Hundred Twenty-Second Street, and we've cleaned out Hundred and Eighteenth Street outfalls to the bay in those areas, and it's still not, we're still not able to keep up with it. So the, these are repairs that need to be done, and this, if we're not gonna do a, a complete road reconstruction in that area, needs to be done now, in order to get that water off the street. Because their yards are flooding, it's damaging their property, and the frequency is, is greater than it has ever been before. So I'm gonna take that out, and we're gonna use the, the stormwater money that we have left over, that we just discussed. Number six is upgrading of equipment, that is for trash pumps, well points, replacement of small engine equipment, have the larger small engine equipment that we have for water and sewer. That's, that doesn't, that's not the larger trucks and backhoes and whatnot. Sewer camera, number seven. We were supposed, we were supposed to go into a co-op We were supposed, we were supposed to go into a co-op with Lower Township and utilize a camera system. But it, but it didn't happen. They ended up buying it themselves. And I put thirty thousand dollars away to subsidize that. And so it didn't come to fruition. Their needs are, are to the point where when we call them and we ask them, we need to video our storm, our storm drains, or we need to video our, our sewer mains, they're not available. So we'd like to purchase one for ourselves. And this is the, I'm sorry, I didn't put it in here, but there is thirty thousand dollars available from old capital that we put away in, in addition to the ninety-eight that we pay for the camera and everything that goes with it. So that we can go out and we can videotape every single problem we have where, where, whether it's the, the new storm drains and, and we're having issues with clogs or sand or whatnot, or any of our sewers from our small eight-inch sewers to, up to the twenty-twos that we have out there.
Not, I don't mean to interject, but at our meeting, we also discussed, I thought it was important that we can stay ahead of the curve with some of the problems and sort of map out what we have. Our infrastructure's so old that, in so many areas, that this is important to have, to really stay ahead of problems before they become a, a major problem.
Yes. Now, we can, we can, we can guess where a problem is if we have a backup at one property and it's only isolated in one, one area. But if we have a backup that's, that accumulates a half a block or so, or even more than that, we can drop the camera in there and run it up to the main and know exactly where the problem is. And then we can turn around and come back down the opposite side and find exactly where the problem is. And then we can cut that part of the street out and, and fix it right away. So we don't have to, to rely on, all right, let's dig there. All right, let's dig there. Maybe that, that'll solve the problems. We can also, we can also catalog all of our, our issues. We know, we know we're having an issue when we see a, a sinkhole in the street or we see a dip in the street and we know that it's a clay pipe. But we want to get there before that happens, before we have a collapse. And this will help us do that.
Grant, I have a question. What happened with the Middle Township co-op? Did they join with someone else or did they just decide to do it on their own?
It was Lower Township.
Lower Township.
They decided to buy the equipment themselves instead of going into a co-op.
Did they say why?
No. No, they didn't. They, they bought the equipment. They said, you can use it whenever it's available. We need it when we need it. And if it, if it's not available, then we have to wait. And then we have an issue. Was it Ninety, Ninety-Fifth Street? We had the backup on Ninety-Fifth Street, just west of Fred's. We couldn't find it, we couldn't find it, we couldn't find the issue. And then they finally came with their camera, like four or five days later. And we're having a backup and we're having collapse and we're having sand all, all through our sewer mains, which is not only one area, it's, it's starting to back up and, and we're having issues with, with other residents. So we can't wait to do that. There's a health risk there and, and it's a convenience as well for us to be able to get in there and do it right away.
Understood.
SCADA, and I'm sorry I didn't put the, the, the last three years we've been putting, or so years we've been putting money away for SCADA. SCADA will allow us to monitor our pumps and our motors in, in both our wells and our sewer lift stations, the water plant, in real time from anywhere, from my office, from a cellphone, from, from our employees' homes. So if there's a problem and we need to increase the, the, the volume of water in the, the water tower because the pressure's down, we can do that. If we have a fire and the, the, it's a, if it's a major fire and we need to increase the amount of water that, that's getting to those mains, we can do so. Immediately when we arrive, because we know what's going on before we get here. Right now, we don't know what's going on. Alls we do is we, we get a, a call from what's called a chatterbox and it says, there's an alarm at Ninety-Sixth Street Water Plant. You have a low-pressure alarm. So we have to come here and research it before we can fix the problem. This will allow us to, to read it in real time and see exactly how our pumps are, are, are working, the, the pump curves and, and how, how much pressure we have in the system. And this, this fifty thousand, I believe, will be enough to, to do pretty much every one of our, our stations. That's four wells, the, the water plant and, and the two lift stations.
Charles, wasn't there, in the former capital for that, a hundred thousand dollars? Was there?
There's, yeah, there's-
I believe there's a hundred thousand available, right around a hundred thousand available right now.
Sixteen, seventeen?
Right.
There was a hundred put in, almost.
Number nine is for well controls. That's for all water and sewer stations. If we need the replacement, emergency replacements of any of our equipment that may go down. They're costly. Everything costs money. And these, the verbatims, the, the, the VFDs, the, the pumps themselves cost a lot of money to replace. And that's what that, ten thousand dollars, that's emergency money. Outfalls and duckbills.
This is called the Ray Parsick duckbill replacement.
Never had enough duckbills.
I, I can honestly say that all of our duckbills are on. We did, we replaced a few of them, one that was questionable, but it's still, over the last couple of days, it still leaks around the, around the, the bulkheads. But all of our duckbills are on and secured. This is just in case we need to replace them for any reason. We have a storm and we lose one or one is damaged by a prop or, or for any reason, somebody removes it from a property, that's to replace it. The average on, on these duckbills are anywhere from four thousand all the way to twelve, fourteen thousand.
So then, all the, all the pipes that need duckbills have duckbills?
Yes, they do.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
With one leaky one, you said? I'm sorry.
Well, if you went out on the streets the last couple of days with the, this supermoon that we had, pretty much everywhere that we usually have water, whether it's a stormwater event or it's a flood event, it was out there. I actually saw water on Ninety-Eighth Street and Third Avenue that I have never seen before.
Yeah, that, that, I've seen it before.
Have you? That was my first opportunity to see that much water and, and we're going to discuss that with the engineers, try to-
Is there any reason-
It will be part of the, it will be part of the, the stormwater project, but for right now, it needs to be addressed.
Is there any reason you don't take such small amounts in such recurring things that you have to buy, like the ten thousand and the twelve thousand, and just put it in your O and E?
That's what we're discussing.
Is there any reason why?
Oh, it-
He adjusting.
These-
Jim will adjust.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to talk about that. We have never done this before.
It seems so small to be in capital.
To me, it's not small.
No, in, in the grand scope of the whole budget-
Yeah, anything over five years and, you know, over five thousand dollars, you know?
If you remember, the last couple of years, Jim has been pulling stuff out and listing it as capital out, like those type of things that you're seeing here. He will do that.
And I haven't had a, a long discussion with him yet about how that works. So, once we sit down to do that, we'll be able to figure that out. Fire hydrants, same thing.
Yeah.
We, we have four, four of them out there right now that have to be replaced. They're older hydrants. They're not functioning. The stems have snapped off, cars run into them and we need to replace them. So that's what that money is there for. Computers, another thing you probably can go into that capital alley. We have a couple of older computers at, at Public Works that need to be changed out. That's what that is there for.
Do you have about forty-five thousand you can move out?
I'm sorry?
You have about forty-five thousand you can move out, if you add all those things as well.
Yeah, it looks that way, yep.
Either that or lump them all together as miscellaneous and have it as one big item.
I'll have to talk to him about that. I don't want to, I don't want, I want to be able to see exactly what it's, what it's there for so it can't be taken and, and spent on something else. This is another thing we, we talked about and this is not on your sheets if you didn't get it in the last couple of days. This is a valve exerciser. Every, every redevelopment project that we do, we are isolating the streets. And in the middle of the, of the street, you'll see a cluster of valves. And whether it's going up to the street end or it's going up to Second Avenue or down First Avenue. What we can do, what we are able to do is we're able to isolate that section from the rest of the system. And it's, what we're doing is we're creating a loop system so that if one area has to be shut down, it doesn't shut down four or five blocks, which has happened in the past, just to fix one piece of pipe in one section of, of a block. The more redevelopment we do and the more valves we put, we put in, the more exercising of those valves we have to do. It's mandated by DEP that every year, we exercise every single one of those valves in town. And this machine will allow us to do that. There's over four thousand valves in town right now, before we do any more redevelopment. This'll, hydraulically, open and close the valve without it breaking. It can be broken. If you, if you turn it, and there are left-handed valves out there and there's right-handed valves out there. Why that is, I ha, I can't answer that. One manufacturer will, will do it one way, another will do it another way, depending on the size and, and whether it's a gate valve or it's a knife valve or, so, we have to exercise them every single year. And this machine will allow us to go out there and hydraulically do it. It also will, you know, it will do a GIS system on it and pinpoint every single one that we have out there, even the ones that have not been surveyed yet. And, and we don't know that are out there that are not on our GIS. And I can take that back and upload it onto the GIS. So now we have a map that says, yes, this one was exercised on this date at this time by this person. And then I can show that to DEP and they can say, you're, you're good. And it also saved my guys from getting hurt. Right now, we have a, we have a exerciser that you have to actually physically hold. And then it has a couple hundred pounds of torque in it. And if, and they have to sit there and actually hold it. It has to go around eighteen times and they have to sit there and hold it. There's over four thousand valves in town. And for them to go out there and do that with a piece of machinery that weighs over two hundred pounds and stick it in a hole and, and clean out the hole and, and, and then record all that information, this machine will actually do it for us. It'll exercise the valve so that it'll check the torque rate on it. So if, if it turns in, to the left and it has too much torque on it, it'll turn to the right and then it'll wait and, before it increases the amount of torque so that it will open instead of snapping the valve in the ground and then we don't have to replace it. So, that's what this is for. And that's it. My time is up. Any questions? I'm sure you have a lot of questions available at any time, except for the next three days. I have to go to Virginia and move my sister. Again, for the fourth time in two years.
Anything for Grant before he sits down? Thank you. Anything more, Jill, for?
Nothing more.
Nothing more? Anybody have anything else? Any questions at this time? Okay. Seeing none, what we'll do then is we can have a motion to adjourn and we'll come back at four thirty and begin a council meeting. So, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.